Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of March 28th, 2019. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I'd like to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded and live streaming on NCAM, so please silence your devices. And one note I just would like to express on behalf of Andrew McDevitt, our school committee member. He is in his car right now on the way here. He had a business trip that he could not reschedule, landed at Logan, and he should be here in five or 10 minutes. We'd like to start with our student report.
Hi, everybody. We just wanted to start out by introducing ourselves for the larger-than-normal crowd here tonight. I'm Caitlin. I'm a senior at North Andover High School, and I'm one of the student reps on the school committee.
And I'm Jack. I'm a junior at North Andover High School, and I'm the other student representative on the school committee.
So we were just wanting to start with a recap because it's been a little while since we've seen you guys. So Mr. North Andover happened, and it turned out really well. Our 2019 Mr. North Andover is Mr. Jimmy Lyons with his amazing talent of Banana Cop the Musical. All the acts were really amazing, and I thought it was really fun personally because these were my classmates, and it was cool to see talents. I didn't really know these people were going to perform, so it was really exciting. Additionally, this past Wednesday after-school, club photos were taken in the gym. I know that the yearbook is going to be finally due and done at the end of March, so this is one of the last big photo-taking events that they're going to be doing, so it's exciting. Additionally, the band performed their concert this past Tuesday on the 19th, and I know a lot of nerves were high because not only were they doing that performance, but they had their big trip.
Yeah, so the North Andover High School Music Department actually just departed for their big trip of this year to Nashville, Tennessee, bright and early at 4:45 this morning. I think there are 248 people that I saw on Twitter that are on the trip. And both sections of the music department will be competing and showing off their talents at a Festival of Gold showcase with the five ensembles of the music department, including the Scarlet Black Singers, the Treble Choir, Concert Choir, Wind Ensemble, and Symphonic Band. They have lots of fun things planned for the trip, and as we speak, I believe that they are currently line dancing, so that's pretty cool. There's been lots of preparation going into this between coordinating rehearsals to prepare as well as organizing various fundraisers throughout the year to offset the cost of the trip. It's going to be a really awesome experience for our music department kids, and we're excited to hear some fun stories about their trip when they come home on Monday.
And so this weekend is Relay for Life. I know that both Jack and myself are participating in this year, and I think I speak for both of us when I say we're excited. This is actually my first time participating in the event. Relay for Life, for anyone who doesn't know, is a fundraising event for the American Cancer Society, and they raise money from this event, and it goes to research, additionally, patient services such as road to recovery.
Yeah, so for students to be able to stay overnight at Relay for Life, the event's from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM from Saturday night to Sunday morning. And for the students to be able to stay overnight, you have to raise a minimum of $100. In addition to providing awesome fundraising for the American Cancer Society, the event has lots of fun stuff planned. There's like a bounce house. There's like lots of stuff going on to keep people busy throughout the night because it can be a long night, but it's really fun. I've participated before. It's a great experience that's very rewarding. Additionally, right now, the junior class is selling tickets to the Hypnotist Show, which was rescheduled from its original date in February due to a snowstorm that happened the night it was supposed to occur. The show will be next Thursday, April 4th, at 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium. Tickets are currently being sold for $7 at all three lunches at the high school, or they can be purchased for $10 at the door. It's a really fun event that's open to the public, and it helps to fundraise for class activities, including junior prom and next-year's senior prom as well as senior week. Lots of students enjoy watching their friends get hypnotized at this really fun event onstage, and we're excited for a great show on Thursday.
And then additionally, a big topic that's been happening is this past month, on March 11th, the Eagle Tribune published an article that discussed the events in which a North Andover teen was arrested after being accused of sexual assault. And I know that this case became really widely talked about at North Andover High School after additional articles came out on the same topic, and one of them released a past victim's school safety plan.
So after the details of this case got around, there were some students who created a social media campaign that advocated for the student body to engage in a walkout. The walkout was planned to occur during advisory from 10:07 AM to 10:27 AM at the North Andover High School courtyard on Wednesday, March 20th. News of the walkout quickly spread between students via the platform of social media. And when the walkout occurred, a large amount of students attended, though we don't know the exact number. It was up to individual students whether or not they chose to attend. At the organized protest, the student organizers led some dialogue on the topic of sexual assault by speaking in front of the crowd. And each of the tables in the courtyard, on each of the tables in the courtyard, there were posters with various statements about sexual assault and school policy for students to read and discuss. Also, although the walkout was published, and at the end of the advisory period, there was a group of students who actually stayed outside until 2:15.
I know that I personally did not participate in the walkout. I think just at the time, I was confused and a bit uninformed about what the purpose of the walkout was and what ultimately it was being protest. And I think that's definitely one of the downsides about social media and word-of-mouth as a way to communicate. I also think a large part of why I was left less inflamed about the administration process was because I personally had already gotten a chance to speak to administration through Mr. Jackson attending our March 18th Student Council meeting. At the meeting, students had the opportunity to ask questions about the policy in general and the laws kind of behind it. And I know that now currently in the school, talk has started to die down, but there are still students who are definitely interested in changing the policies in place. And you guys will be hearing more from those students tonight. So thank you guys for your time, and that's it for our report.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to our consent agenda and approving of the minutes from last meeting.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Sorry, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from last March 14th, Thursday, as presented in the packet.
Second.
Motion being by Ms. Mably, seconded by Ms. Picard. Any discussion? Mr. Treese?
Aye.
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 And aye. Now the superintendent's report.
Good evening, and thank you for attending this important meeting tonight. As the superintendent of the North Andover Public Schools, I truly value your input as students, parents, guardians, and community members. The recent reports in the press have been challenging to those personally impacted and to our school community. And I understand the concern parents have when it's reported in the press that one of our high school students has been charged with serious felony crimes in New Hampshire as well as a misdemeanor in Massachusetts which was reported to have occurred last spring off of school property. State and federal law preclude me from speaking about student specifics about school actions or investigations, and I understand how that can be very frustrating for parents, students, and community members. I also understand that people question this during times like these, but I can assure you that student privacy laws are very restrictive. Part of the doubt may come from the fact that as much as we would like to at times, we're restricted by law from discussing the specifics of any situation. This limits our ability to fully explain reasons behind decisions and/or actions, and sometimes that can lead to misinformation or wrong assumptions that we cannot address. Since being appointed as the new superintendent this past academic school year, I've devoted substantial efforts to reviewing all aspects of our district as part of my entry. I had a chance to survey or meet with over 1,100 people, and at the middle school and high school, I got to meet with representative classes from the freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and seniors, as well as six, seven, and eight, and I am going to start with fifth graders soon. Please know that I'm committed to full transparency around policies and procedures while abiding by student privacy laws. I know several people have had many questions regarding the following over the last few weeks. I've heard questions about Massachusetts general law pertaining to public schools, particularly around student discipline at both school and off-campus as well. I've heard questions about the juvenile justice system. Additionally, I've heard several questions about the North Andover School Committee policies which guide us, Title IX and safety plans, athletic participation in school discipline. These can be complex issues, and we rely on Massachusetts general law, the Mass Association of School Committees, and our legal counsel to guide this work. At times like these, I believe it's our responsibility to reevaluate district policies and practices when concerns are raised. I've always believed, in my heart of hearts, that if there is an issue, let's confront that reality. And it's best to shine a light on it, determine what the facts are, and make changes to better serve students in the future. To that end, I've retained the services of outside legal consultant to conduct an independent review of our current policies, procedures, and forms, including school safety plans relating to reports of student criminal activity and/or harassment, the processing and investigation of such reports, and ensuring a safe and non-hostile environment for all students at all of our schools. To that end, we've retained Jeffrey M. Sankey of Sankey Law from Braintree, Massachusetts. Attorney Sankey has over 30 years of legal experience. He has extensive experience in public school law, sexual abuse, discrimination, and Title IX. As a civil rights lawyer, he truly specializes in the representation of students, parents, and individual plaintiffs. Upon completion of that review, I'll be sharing these findings with the North Andover community along with recommendations made. I'll also be advocating for policy revisions, if necessary or as necessary, to best serve our students. I think it's also important to emphasize that our high school administrators and staff are in this business because they care about kids. They develop safety plans to protect students who report bullying, harassment as an intrameasure to ensure a safe and supportive environment for all. Safety plans are commonly utilized interventions in schools across the state to limit direct contact between alleged target and an aggressor, alleged aggressor. Here in North Andover, we would not want safety plans to be perceived as restrictive, punitive for students who report bullying, sexual harassment, or other discriminatory behaviors. And that would not be the true intent behind the actions at North Andover High School. As part of this independent review, school safety plans and their implementation will be thoroughly evaluated. It's my intent to ensure that our practices going forward are consistent with the goals of ensuring a safe environment for all students. We want to encourage students to report any instances of sexual harassment and bullying and provide the supports, interventions, to prevent further conflict during following or after an investigation. Due to recent concerns being expressed about some current school safety plans that apply to students who have reported being subjected to sexual harassment, I have asked North Andover High School Principal, Chet Jackson, to rescind any formal school safety plan for such students pending the completion of the independent review. School staff will be able to offer to meet with these individual students to discuss any supports that may be seeking to ensure that the school remains a safe and welcoming place for them. And these offered supports would be purely on a voluntary basis on the part of a student. Moving forward, as school leaders, we'll continue to work in conjunction with the high school director of guidance, Steve Nugent, the director of social-emotional learning, Nikki Murphy, director of nursing, Cheryl Bazak, school psychologist, Gina Marie Bonanno, to design comprehensive programming for all students on violence prevention, sexual assault, and healthy relationships that go beyond our life skills and health curriculum. This will include reviewing what students available supports for survivors, bystanders, and clear paths for reporting incidents. Community partnerships will start to play a key role and will play a key role in our work ahead. Our leadership around social-emotional learning, counseling, recently met with YWCA's Community Outreach Program that focuses on domestic violence and sexual assault awareness. They work in several local high schools to provide education and resources for students and staff, and we plan to utilize them here in our district. I think it's also important to work with other community members. We'll continue to work with Deanna Cruz, our community support specialist that works out of Town Hall, Youth Center Director, Rick Gorman, as well as Chief of Police, Charles Gray, in the North Andover Police Department, who we work very closely with. I believe strongly that besides students and staff, parents, their perspective and voices play a key role in working with our town, police, and schools to educate and prevent instances of sexual misconduct, including assault and harassment. Therefore, our director of social-emotional learning, Nikki Murphy, and our counselors will be looking for parents to assist in that work by sharing their perspective and helping coordinate an informational night for parents and guardians and other members of the community. We'll also be looking into other additional partnerships. I'm thankful to the high school staff over the last few weeks, particularly the additional counselors that were on hand to support students as necessary. I'm very proud of our high school students who have worked thoughtfully to raise awareness about sexual assault, voice concerns regarding how to best support survivors and their families, advocate for more education and change if necessary. And the opportunity to meet with a few of them the other day was inspiring. Their insight, honesty, and ideas, and their ability to speak pretty frankly, will help make our schools in town a more supportive place. Oftentimes, student voice in a lot of school districts across the Commonwealth or anywhere are sometimes the least heard at the community level or at the district level. Certainly, they meet with folks at schools, but I think they play an important role in having their voices heard. The safety and well-being of our students is and will always be my top priority as superintendent of schools in North Andover. I want to thank parents for coming out tonight. You play an incredibly important role as advocates for your children, and I think that's what parents should do. There's no one in the world, typically, who knows them better than you. I appreciate your questions, concerns, and input. It's important to know that I truly believe your feedback will help us grow and do better. And I don't view discord or criticism as a bad thing. In fact, in this world, I think critics help us grow in any organization that wants to improve. In conclusion, we must always strive to improve the support of our students, safety, well-being, academic performance, overall school experience, all aspects of school. What I've learned over 25 years in this business and now as a new superintendent is that reflection and review are critical to any school district that is working to improve. Part of that reflection must also be the willingness to make changes as necessary to best serve students, not to just comply with laws and regulations, but to do so in a manner that's responsive and compassionate to student needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gilligan. Now for the chair's report. One business item for the committee. Last meeting, we were going back and forth with our next meeting date would be. We've settled on April 11th, two weeks from tonight. So we wrote our statements independently, so I'm going to apologize in advance. There may be some repetition and overlap. Good evening and welcome. Before I begin, I would like to clarify a misunderstanding about our meeting tonight. There's been some confusion over the fact that this topic does not appear as an agenda item. Please know that we have devoted the majority of tonight's meeting to hearing from residents. It is not a line item on the agenda because that would mean that only school committee members would be discussing it. We are interested in hearing what the public has to say, so we scrapped all of our business agenda except for what we need to vote on later in order to hear from as many people as possible. Rather than cut public comments short, we felt that hearing from the citizens was a priority. To that end, thank you all for coming out tonight to share your concerns with us. It is great when a community rallies and comes together to tackle one of the most under-reported crimes in the country, sexual abuse. We have an opportunity to not only raise awareness but to actively work together to prevent instances of sexual misconduct, including assault and harassment. I believe that everyone in this room tonight is committed to providing the safest environment possible for our students, and our schools work closely with public safety and other agencies to achieve this. If there are changes that need to occur, then we need to identify those changes and other existing problems and work together to implement them. If there are policies, procedures, or even laws that may need to be revisited, please know that the school committee and Dr. Gilligan are committed to pursuing and advocating for change to benefit all students. Much of the discussion in recent news stories regarding our town has involved the use of support plans, commonly referred to as school safety plans. Although the supports and interventions to provide a safe and non-hostile environment for students who are subjected to or accused of bullying or harassment, pending investigations and following a determination that bullying or harassment has occurred are consistent with the directives of both the state and federal Departments of Education, we recognize the concern that these safety plans and forms in their current state may not be serving the needs of the student who reports being subjected to such bullying, violence, or harassment of any type. Due to these concerns, the district is reevaluating the process through which our schools are providing individual supports to those students. Tonight is an important step in that process. Although stated publicly on numerous occasions already, we would like to remind everyone that we will not be discussing individual students or complaints in this forum as the district has not been provided with consent to discuss any information relating to or linkable to any individual students. And in the absence of such consent, it is prohibited from doing so under federal and state student privacy laws. As you heard from Dr. Gilligan, in addition to hearing from the public, the school department has hired an outside expert to conduct the independent review. We look forward to the findings and recommendations to adjust policies and practices as needed. I'd also like to briefly explain the current practices relating to reports of criminal student misconduct that takes place off-school grounds and outside of school hours. Any student reporting having been the victim of criminal conduct outside of school, as is the case with the incidents referenced in recent news reports, is immediately referred to the school resource officer or other appropriate law enforcement authority. Upon this report to law enforcement, the investigation and prosecution of any charges is under the jurisdiction of law enforcement authorities only and not the school district. The school's authority to discipline students for such conduct out of school is limited to instances where the student is actually charged with a felony or where it is established that there is a direct nexus between the out-of-school conduct and the school. Even when lacking the authority, however, to impose disciplinary sanctions on the perpetrator, it has been North Andover High's practice to implement safety plans in the school setting to prevent contact between the victim and the perpetrator to support the students involved. Because for many of you, this may be your first school committee meeting, I'd like to first give a brief description of what our role is. The school committee has three responsibilities. The first is approving the school budget each year. The second is reviewing and approving school policies, which is not to be confused with practices. And the third is hiring the superintendent who implements policies established by the committee and oversees the day-to-day operations of the district. The responsibility that is relevant to tonight's discussion is the second one, reviewing school policies. An example of this would be the policy around adding vaping to the student handbook, which we approved last spring. What the committee does not do is dictate the specific consequence, sanction, or intervention for vaping or other offenses. That responsibility falls to the superintendent and school principals and is guided by Mass General Law. So in regard to safety plans, the school committee can review, endorse, and approve any policies that are recommended as a result of this independent review, but the committee would not provide specific input on a particular safety plan for an individual student. The purpose of school committee meetings is to conduct business related to matters in our areas of responsibility. They are open to the public to observe and make comments, but they are neither designed nor intended for a back-and-forth conversation with the committee. Because we value input from the community, we always reserve time for public comment on our agenda in two places. We have reserved the majority of tonight's meeting for such comment, and it is our wish to hear from as many of you as possible. For that reason, this is a large crowd, we will limit each person to three minutes. We will be taking notes, which we will use as part of the review process, and there's an audio recording that we can also refer to if we need clarification about a comment made. In order to hear as many comments as possible, if a committee member wishes to respond to any particular comment, we will do so at the end. Because the school district is required to maintain the confidentiality of student record information under the law, no information regarding specific students or safety plans will be discussed tonight. Please know that your comments and the completion of the independent review will help us address any policies or processes identified for improvement. We have asked the town and school attorneys and the police chief to be here tonight to hear your comments and be a resource to this committee. In the interest of time and getting to hear as many voices as possible, we are most interested in hearing different perspectives, so we would respectfully ask that you please refrain from repeating what someone else has already said. Finally, when you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the minutes. Residents of North Andover will have priority over non-residents, so if you are not a resident, please wait until the end to approach the microphone. Now I would like to invite first to comment the students who courageously and admirally organized a walkout at the school last week. I know they have prepared something to share, and the entire committee looks forward to hearing it.
Before we start, we would like to address the audience and even the school committee. If you are comfortable, I ask that if you or a loved one is a survivor of sexual violence, please stand now. Thank you. All, please be seated. Good evening. My name is Ava Gilbord, and I am a senior at North Andover High School. I stand here tonight alongside Julie Sheerhart and Lexi Regan. Last week, we organized a walkout to raise awareness about sexual violence. Close to 400 students walked out of their classrooms and stood together for survivors of sexual violence. I also stand here tonight with Shannon Hill, a North Andover High School alumni who, together with fellow alumni Abigail Kibler, wrote the letter to the administration in response to the recent events. To start off, we would like to thank Chair Holly Lynch and the rest of the school committee for giving us the opportunity to speak. We have been working extremely hard, day and night, researching this topic and brainstorming ideas. Multiple other students and parents have come to us with their own thoughts, so we will be representing a big part of the community. Thank you all for allowing us a platform to share them. What you just saw was a visual representation of how many individuals sexual violence affects. We would like to clarify that we do not see sexual assault as a gender or race-specific issue because anyone can do this, and it can happen to anyone at any time. Therefore, this topic should not be taken lightly. We want to address this problem in the most civil and effective way possible. Many people are upset with how the school handled this specific case of sexual assault. Therefore, we feel the need to seek change so it never occurs again. Principal Jackson stated that these contracts are in place to keep both parties safe. We can confirm that multiple people who have received these contracts, specifically the victims of sexual assault, said that these contracts did not in fact make them feel safe. It actually takes away many of their rights. Although there are supposed to be equal rules for both parties, it seems that the school has directed much more restraint towards their survivors of sexual assault. We feel that these contracts are unfair and that the survivor of sexual assault should never be the one displaced. At the walkout, we put out seven of the most common statements and asked participants to sign if they agree. We have a poster here. It says, "A survivor of sexual assault should not have to change their lifestyle to accommodate their attacker or be restricted in any way." This statement had the most signatures. As someone who has been presented the same contract for physical assault, I cannot imagine how a survivor of sexual assault would feel when asked to sign this. This is not okay, and something needs to be done. We can improve, and we have ideas to contribute to positive change.
Hello. Hello. My name is Lexi Regan, and I'm a senior and one of the leaders of the walkout. First and foremost, it is essential to direct our attention to the issues of sexual assault head-on. This requires naming the act itself outright and addressing the holes in the policy which allowed for this to happen more than once. In Dr. Gilligan's initial letter to parents, he used the phrase "criminal activity" to address the series of events of the past couple of weeks. Our priority is to address instances of sexual assault with our community honestly and directly rather than cloaking it with the word "criminal activity." We understand this subject is sensitive, and using the word rape and sexual assault can be upsetting, especially while speaking to young students. The hard truth, though, is that if we neglect to address this and use those words, these situations will be minimized and the importance will fade away. This is a real issue that needs to be addressed. We understand there are certain laws, policies, and protocols which keep the administration from disclosing certain information. Laws can't be changed overnight, however, there are alternative procedures that can be put in place to better the sexual assault protocol overall until this can happen. We have and will continue to work closely with the administration and state representatives, lawyers, and the media. We are grateful for the parents who met with us over the weekend. Their faith and support shows us that our message tonight is one that is warmly welcomed with the community. State Representative Christina Manucci and Tram Nguyen also met with us over the weekend, and they have served as pillars of support and validation. They sit here in the audience tonight as resources and connections for our community. Together, we welcome the North Andover School community to join us and move forward in the right direction to adequately protect our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Hill, and I graduated North Andover High School in 2014. Last week, Abigail Kibler, who graduated from the high school in 2013, and I wrote a letter to the administration in response to their recent handling of sexual violence in the North Andover Public School community. Currently, that letter has nearly 1,000 signatures and support from various members of our community, ranging from alumni of the class of 1981 to parents of the class of 2030. Abby and I are so thankful for the three girls standing beside me. Their ability to quickly and effectively organize a student body is a testament to the importance of this issue in the North Andover High School community. Together, we firmly believe that the most proactive measures we can take to address sexual violence in the school community include not only policy change, but also programs that focus on educating students about topics of sex and healthy relationships. We recognize that the school is working with outside legal counsel to assess their policies, and we appreciate that effort. Tonight, we would like to offer our ideas into that conversation through a list of demands. First, we demand a policy change. The existing policy in the student handbook for student-to-student harassment must have a new clause that specifically addresses sexual violence. We drafted an example of what this policy would look like, and we wish to submit it to the committee for consideration. The handbooks for athletics and extracurricular activities must include a zero-tolerance policy for acts of sexual violence. Students who are found to have committed these acts should not have the privilege to participate in extracurriculars offered by the school. Next, we demand adequate sex education. It is not the responsibility of children to help their friends process and understand their experiences with sexual violence. But unfortunately, many students, like the girl standing next to me, have had that burden fall on their shoulders. Therefore, we demand a well-rounded sex education curriculum that more effectively educates students about consent, healthy relationships, sexual violence, and the rights and resources they have if they face sexual violence. Students should also be educated on the consequences of committing acts of sexual violence. This is critical. This program can easily be integrated into the existing mandatory health classes. This will present itself as a steadfast stance by the administration that they do not tolerate sexual violence and are committed to diminishing the culture that brushes sexual assault under the rug. It is the responsibility of the school committee to show the community that, without a doubt, the North Andover school system does not provide sanctuary for predators. Finally, we demand that the school committee create a special task force that includes at least one current high school student from each grade. This special task force is meant to hold us all accountable in enacting meaningful change. We demand that this special task force is created before the next school committee meeting. We also demand that this same task force create a peer education program. This program can work with existing peer leadership programs to have trained upper-class student leaders join middle school classrooms to speak about topics related to sex. It is important that peer leaders are present in these middle schoolers' lives to model mature and confident conversations about safe and healthy relationships and to disrupt dangerous misconceptions that they likely have already learned about sex and relationships. We have written up these ideas into a demand letter with dates for their completion. We believe that all of these ideas can be fleshed out and implemented for the 2019-2020 school year. Together, the administration, the school committee, and the community can work to transform the way we talk to, educate, and discipline students to ensure that we are a community that prioritizes the safety, health, and well-being of all students. We also welcome suggestions from this community and hope to work together to make change. Thank you all for your time and attention.
Thank you, Shannon.
Good evening. My name is Julie Sheerhart, and I am a senior at North Andover High School and one of the leaders and organizers of the walkout. We want to address the reason why we've all worked so hard on this. We would like to point out that if the perpetrator had not been arrested, this would have never been brought to light. This is a culture that has always existed in our community and a greater community as a whole. This is a toxic cycle which has run its course way too many times. I know that many members on the committee are parents as well. Therefore, we need to ensure that this does not keep happening as we move forward. I work closely with the children at the ABECC, and I do not want those precious smiles to grow up and fade away. I don't want this to happen to them or anyone else who we love in the school system. This is no longer for us, this is for the future kids of the North Andover Public Schools. We spent the past week or so staying unbiased so we could become a mediator outlet between the student body and the administration. We've been leaving our opinion out of this entirely. We wanted to clarify that we're still not angry nor are we blaming anyone. Yes, the administration is working hard on this, and yes, there are... Yes? I know. Yes, there's a lot, and much of it is out of their control. But when this all started happening, there should have been an immediate statement by the school. There should have been an, "Okay, this is happening, and this is what we're going to do to fix it." The community needs transparency during times like these. When topics this crucial are not addressed properly, we are left with concerns and questions. There should have been a lot more support for all parties, parents, and students, whether or not they were involved. It shouldn't have taken multiple calls from parents in a student-led walkout for us to get answers. We wonder what would have happened if we and multiple other students refrained from stepping up and using our voice. There should have been a lot more happening, especially a lot more than two or three emails. I hope that in the future, when a topic this crucial arises, that there's much more communication involved. Speaking of the walkout, we understand that only a few hundred people were present, and the actual meeting was distorted by the media and by word of mouth. We have put together a folder which includes everything we did. This includes our initial statement, our speech, student statements, parent statements, opinions, et cetera. This will be available to the public as a PDF as well. Finally, we understand that we're short on time. I would like to add that everyone here who wants to speak has the right to be heard. We strongly suggest that there is another meeting held to allow everyone time to share their thoughts on the subject. I can guarantee that if this does not happen, many people will come to the next meeting and the next meeting, as many as the community needs. The walkout was not the end of this movement, and neither is the meeting. This is just the beginning. We need to do better, and this is where we're going to start. Thank you.
If anybody would like to make public comment, please come up to the microphone and just state your name and address.
Hi. I'm a little shorter than everybody else that was walking up here before. My name is Corinne Roten. I live with my family at 13 Perry Street. I come to you today to speak to you as a former teacher, a former school committee member, mother of three sons attending North Andover Public Schools, and a recovered sexual assault victim. I have three sons. My oldest is a sophomore at North Andover High School. My two others are seventh and eighth graders at North Andover Middle School. I taught math, science, and music to middle school students in Revere. I served on this committee from 2009 to 2012. And as a fifth grader, I was sexually assaulted over a period of four months by a school employee in an affluent town. I have the unique position of collection of direct experiences to appreciate multiple positions and the tough place that everyone is in. There are multiple concerns to be addressed, and I am eager to hear the thoughts from the body that we've all elected and trust with our best interests. Though the specific nature and specific incident cannot be discussed, nor should it, we can brainstorm together with these brave and ambitious students, alumni, parents, and residents to bring about change and healing to our entire community. I am confident we can do this if we are all honest. The three main things the school committee is charged with, as the chair stated, are the budget, hiring and evaluating the superintendent, and the school district policy. The school committee members should not remain silent on this responsibility. District policy should be reviewed regularly. Yet, in a cursory review, I have seen many policies that haven't been reviewed in over six years or longer. I would like to suggest and hear a commitment from this duly-elected body to its constituents to more regularly review those policies, especially in an ever-revolving world that we live in. I do understand how big the policy book is, too, by the way. It is ginormous. Because I was in charge of reviewing a lot of it when I first came on, and let me tell you, it was daunting. But if you set up some kind of, "Let's do three policies every week or every meeting" just to make sure that they match with what current culture and current Massachusetts general law states, I think that would go a long way in restoring confidence to the parents in this community. In my opinion, drawing from professional and personal experience, that the current school system, the policies that are currently in the book may have failed not only our students but also our administration. I implore you as a mother, a recovering victim, a former teacher, and a former colleague to arrange for scheduled additional time to meet with these young women here and come up with some new policies that will better protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Brecker. I live at 488 Pleasant Street. I have no children in the school system at present, though we had three who got the benefit of the school system when they were younger. This is a fascinating discussion tonight. I appreciated the remarks of the superintendent, but I found them completely one-sided. All they did was talk about the policies that pertain to the safety plans for people who had been abused, attacked, threatened, harassed, et cetera. There's been no discussion, other than one mentioned by one of these young women, about accountability for the people doing these things. I'll only remind you of the colossal tragedy in Florida that was perpetrated by a student who the police had visited his family more than three dozen times. He'd been subjected to apparently ineffective disciplinary measures in the school more than 45 times, and because he got the message that he could do anything he wanted to anyone and nothing would ever happen to him, he then shot up the school and killed 17 people. So we are very lucky, I suppose, that this young man is now in jail in New Hampshire because it's been pointed out. If it hadn't been for that, perhaps this issue would never have begun public. But I would say that as much attention needs to be paid to providing consequences to perpetrators as it does to these apparently ineffective and counterproductive safety plans, that the real safety plan is to do something about the people who are doing the wrong things in our schools. And that would be the best way to protect these brave young women and their fellow students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Watson. I live at 30 Huckleberry Lane in North Andover, Massachusetts. I am a product of the North Andover Public Schools, graduated in the class of 1991. And my husband and I moved back here to raise our three children who are currently in the school system. So I'm speaking up here. First, I want to just thank the courage, and I have the utmost admiration for the courage you girls have shown, young ladies have shown, and you've done a fantastic job. And I really like the ideas that you've put forward, and I second the things that they've said. But what I'm up here to talk about tonight is, and I'm asking you, the school committee, to assert and take a stand that change actually is needed. So far, we have a current school policy that indicates school discipline, and this was presented earlier tonight, is only possible if someone commits a felony or a non-felony offense only if it's conducted on school grounds. That means that a minor sexually assaults another fellow student outside of school, he or she is allowed to participate in all school activities, including sports representing the school, without consequence, while that person's victim has to face them every single... day. And this is wrong. It is just simply wrong. And I would like to hear the school committee acknowledge that that is wrong. The school department has painted the picture that their hands are tied. They've sent out emails that cite Massachusetts General Laws, which are very incomplete. They neglected, for example, to cite Chapter 37, Section 8, Section 37 H34, which is actually cited in the Andover High School policy. Andover High School does not have these restrictions to non-school discipline for acts that don't rise to the felony standard, and they offer for disciplinary action in school. So they are allowing, at least for the possibility, which is cited in this section of school law. But you are our school committee members, and as you stated at the beginning, Ms. Lynch, you have a responsibility for policy. So I'm asking you to change the language you're using from "if there needs to be a change," "if something is permissible." Take a stand that something needs to change. We don't know what the change is yet. I think it needs to happen at the federal level, at the state level, at the court, in the court system, but some of it has to happen here too. So I'm asking you, as the school committee leaders, our elected officials entrusted with instituting this policy, to please take a stand. And I hope that in your final comments tonight, you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Healy. I live at 33 Edmonds Road. Good evening, Superintendent and distinguished members of the school committee. I don't really have a prepared statement. I've been taking things in and jotting down notes. I did really appreciate what the gentleman before me said, and I kind of wanted to piggyback on that. In full disclosure, I am a public school teacher in Methuen. I wonder if the high school uses the PBIS Behavior Program, which is very commonly used. I'm inferring that it's used in the elementary and middle schools. I'm wondering if that's under review. Furthermore, I assume, obviously you can't comment on this nor should you comment on this, that the alleged attacker had some recurring behavioral issues. Again, I don't know. I'm inferring based on experience. So I would assume that there were Tier Two and Three implementations, and that that student was ultimately found to be appropriately placed in the mainstream classroom, and that that was the least restrictive environment for him, even in light of any other behavioral infractions that may have occurred. In other words, I would assume that there is a paper trail that we could follow. I would recommend releasing the specific chain of command for following up with behavioral complaints by students. In other words, if they complain, to whom does it go? Who does that person report to and so forth? I don't know if the process needs to be streamlined, but just so that there's a paper trail and so that you can follow up. You know, it's similar to what he said, what happened, I'm sorry, I forgot his name, what happened in Florida, you know, that cannot and that must not be allowed to happen here. And to that end, there just needs to be a very streamlined and transparent process for following up on complaints, and I do wonder if their current behavior program, whatever it may be, if it is under review. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I have to say is, when a sexual attack happens in the school and you go to the school and you go with your child, you meet some very wonderful people that are helpful, the resource officer, the vice principal, they guide you through a process, and then they suggest you take it to the legal road. So you do. You take your child, the victim, to court. You get a restraining order. It's a horrible experience for the parent, for the child. Then you come back to the school and you say, "Okay, I went to court and I got this restraining order." Then they do their investigation and tell you, "We couldn't find anything to support it." The judge found something to support it, so why didn't the school? Why is the judge overruled by the school? If a judge said this happened at the school and we're giving you a restraining order, then that should be enough for the school. I cannot understand for the life of me how the schools are allowed to supersede a judge. They said this law was broken. We're giving you the restraining order. You're supposed to be safe now. And it doesn't work out that way, though safety plans are very restrictive, especially to the victim, even though now they have been changed a little bit, where the victim is free to travel. That's a new thing, a brand-new thing. However, that victim is terrified, and the perpetrator is allowed to go to chorus and is allowed to go to baseball and is allowed to do whatever it is that he's allowed to do. And the courts have said he's guilty. You have to stay away from the victim. So the victim can't go to school shows, school concerts, baseball games. They can't go. And that's not right. They are the victim.
My name is Michelle Crowe, and I no longer live in North Andover. We moved. My daughter was the first victim. This was two years ago. She's still only 16. The school had one job, and that was to stop this from happening again, and you failed. You were and still are mandated to protect victims under their civil rights. Please do not have a separate policy because it will take away their civil rights. I've heard about criminal activity, bullying, harassment. Let's call it what it is. It's rape. It's an ugly word because it's an ugly crime, and the only reason it's out in the open is because the boy turned 18. I have, on behalf of the victims and their families, a list of 27 questions, and I would like to submit them to you, because I've heard enough already.
Hi, I'm Laura Howell, 43 Phillips Court. I have one son who graduated from the high school and one who is a junior. I would like to hear you speak at the end of the evening as to what your timeframe is for this independent review and when you expect to have that completed. We didn't hear anything about that. It's amazing to me that it has taken what it has to get this out into the open, and it's really scary to think how easily we could all not be aware of what is going on here. A very low percentage of people who were sexually assaulted actually report that. And when we have a culture here in North Andover, in the school, and in the broader community, that continues to victim blame and victim shame, it's not going to get any better, okay? So we all know that this is going on all the time, and we just know a few people, a few young women, who were assaulted by this one young man, but it's, this is not something that happens every once in a while. And so we really need to look at, how are we not, how are we going to not revictimize the victims and re-traumatize the families? So I encourage you to focus on caring for our children more than being concerned about what your media coverage is. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Maybe if people wanna leave, maybe pick a five-minute recess, because it's gonna be kinda distracting to think if everybody's gonna, are people gonna stay around or not?
Sure.
Okay. Just a suggestion.
So the... What's up?
Do you want to make comments now or after the whole meeting?
You can do it now. If you wanna do it now. Yeah.
If you want to do it now. She said if you want to do it now.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. Maybe we should, I know some people wanna hear the school committee talk a little bit, and I know we're gonna get into some other boring parts of the business, so maybe we should just say a few words now. I just wanna, first of all, congratulate and commend all you women up front, and you're women. The bravery that you've shown, the leadership that you've shown, it's been eye-opening for me personally. Someone has a six-year-old daughter, I can only hope that they have the courage. I know Tim, your dad, is very proud of you. So honestly, I've taken a lot of notes, and we're taking this to heart. We're taking this very seriously. I know everyone in the school committee and the administration have absolutely been overwhelmed by your level of leadership here, and we're gonna work hard to make this right. We are, okay? So thank you.
Any other comments?
I really would just like to echo Dr. David Terese's doctor. But I really wanna thank, again, the students for organizing the walkout, for being here today, for being so thoughtful. I think you have some absolutely fantastic suggestions. I think there are some changes that need to be made, absolutely, and I think that one of your suggestions, you know, was identifying the task force, and I would love to be part of that, to work with you, to understand from a student perspective what we can do to make this right. My oldest is a freshman at the high school. I have another one who will be there in another year, and then a daughter who is 11, and I want, I would love for her to be sure that where she is is as safe as possible, and I thank you for helping to pave the road for that. Thank you.
I really wanna thank the community gathered here. This has been a very thoughtful and respectful conversation from which we can move forward in positive ways. I don't think every community in Massachusetts, certainly not every community across the country, would have this level of respect for one another in listening to one another, in caring for one another in the best way that we can.
Everyone acknowledges that this is very difficult, and I thank everyone for coming out tonight to listen and to share ideas and to share very challenging experiences. We are dedicated to students. I don't think anyone would be in education if they didn't care about growing and building students, people, into the best people that they can be. And if there are things that we need to do to improve safety and make people feel more comfortable in their learning environment, that's what we're dedicated to do as well. It can't happen by tomorrow, but it certainly needs to happen as fast as it can, do as much as we can to make some changes. Thank you for sharing your ideas today.
You've already heard from me once, but I just wanna echo everything my colleagues have said up here. I concur wholeheartedly with every sentiment expressed. And just to follow up, I'm not sure which question it was, but it was a question about the timeline regarding the independent review. I can tell you that it started yesterday, and it is scheduled to be wrapped up very quickly, very quickly. Right?
It's pretty thorough, but it should be, hopefully, within two weeks.
Right. It's not gonna be a year-long thing, is what I meant.
Yeah, it's not gonna be extended, because we wanna get the information as soon as possible to identify.
Right.
My name is Tatum Wise, 39 Royal Crest Drive. I'm entitled to equal treatment as a victim of sex/gender-based offense. Imagine being in my shoes, waking up with constant anxiety every morning, knowing that I was gonna go and make my best effort to get an education while facing my perpetrator. School may be some people's safe place, but the school environment became so hostile for me to the point I had no choice but to transfer to night school, while my perpetrator continued his education and managed to stay on his sports team with no consequences. I had to face my threat of being punished by North Andover High for walking down the main hallway or going near the gymnasium because my perpetrator had wrestling practice the hours I was getting my education. My grandmother set up meetings and met with the assistant principal several times, and we suggested alternative schooling for him, such as homeschooling, but no changes or discipline were enforced. So further steps were taken in court. I felt like I was being punished for what my perpetrator did to me, and I couldn't go anywhere in this school without administrators watching me. I was always told if I violated the plan I had signed, it would result in school discipline. Thank you.
I'm at, I live at 39 Royal Crest Drive in North Andover. That's my granddaughter. She was the second person that he violated. She was made a prisoner when she came to school. Every day, walk this way, do this way, do that. He was allowed to do whatever he wanted to do. When they had the walkout, no newspapers or anybody was allowed in. But when this predator was on the field two weeks before, photographers were allowed in to take his picture. My granddaughter was made to be the victim, and she was treated terribly by the teachers and terribly by everybody at North Andover School. She was told, "Be quiet, don't say anything, just do what you have to do, and if you don't walk the way we want and talk the way we want, you will face punishment." While he went on and did whatever he wanted. Once, we went to court, eight months this took in court, eight months. She had to come here to school every single day and face him. And if it wasn't for her going into court and testifying against him, he would not have been on probation, and the judge in New Hampshire wouldn't have known that, and everything would have just went, and everybody would have graduated, and nothing would have happened. You all tried to keep it quiet, and I understand that, because you all tried to save your own butts. But this kid, eight months, she's the brave one. She's the warrior. She's the one that stood up in a courtroom at 17 years old and told what happened to her, and went to court eight times in eight months, and still got all this kinda crap from the school. Can't walk here, you can't do this, you can't go here. You people think you can supersede what the court says? Well, learn you can't. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I would like to know how many plans that you have.
I'm sorry, if you're gonna do public comment, you have to come to the mic, please.
My name's Donna Vecchione, I live in Enfield Street, North Andover, Mass. These safety plans, I would, we were discussing with the group, of how many are issued? I know you can't talk about who they are, or who they're against, or what the, you know, what type of things. But how many safe, how many plans are issued within the middle school, within the high school? And what is the plan to keep those children safe? I know another woman had mentioned, does those acts or that behavior follow that student? And is it followed through the middle school, up to the high school? And are they still continued to have that safety plan, depending upon their act, whether it's abuse, a behavioral issue, but mostly a sexual abuse, or a predator? So, are those public record? Which I believe they are, but you can't discuss on who they are issued to, or between. So, I mean, that was my question.
Thank you.
I came here, my name is David Brad, and I am 88-years-old. And I came here this evening to listen to what was going to be said at this meeting. I was the arresting officer for a 12-year-old girl who was kidnapped, taken into the woods in Boxford, and a man tried to rape her. She wouldn't allow it to happen. She came to, she came back to her home in North Andover with the help of a neighbor. And we took the man who kidnapped her and raped her into court. It turned out to be the longest-running murder trial in the history of Massachusetts. The young lady who was taken into the woods, and who that man tried to rape, years later, was able to stand up on a witness stand, into Superior Court, and point him out. And he spent the rest of his life in jail. He's dead now, the young lady is still alive. What has happened in this town, in this school, is nothing new. One of my last jobs in North Andover was being the juvenile officer. My job was to work with the children of this town of North Andover, and the problems that arose in their lives. And I found out very rapidly, when I started doing that job, that I did not have the backing, I did not have anywhere to go to get answers to the problems that were coming before me. And so, with the help of Kenny Kraus, and his wife Carrie, and my wife, we created North Andover Youth Services. We created it so that these young people would have a place to go and feel safe, and be able to talk to somebody who would be on their side, much the way we elderly people have a place to go when we get old. What's happened to you, to you ladies, is nothing new. It has been going on for years, and it will continue to go on for years. I know the superintendent of schools, I worked with his father, I know the police chief. I sat with him just days ago to discuss the problems that are arising in the town of North Andover. I have always told these individuals that if there was anything that I can ever do to help, I would be more than willing to set aside whatever I'm doing and be, and work in their behalf. I say that again to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at Sutton Hill Road in North Andover. And I work in human resources in corporate America, so I have a perspective on this that's a little different. In corporate America, in cases of harassment and assault, the employer has an obligation to protect the community, to protect the other employees. And as an employer, you have to protect your employee from harassment by their coworkers, but also by potentially, by third parties, by your clients. I'd like to understand what training our administrators have to address complaints of assault? Do they have any training? Do we have a budget to provide that training? And I would like to ensure that there is some kind of actionable item into any new policy that's developed that protects the community. Because in this case, there was certainly a dangerousness situation here. He was on his third victim, fourth victim. He, someone must have notified, noticed a pattern of behavior developing. There was no notice to the community? I feel like there could have been a generic message to the community, something along the lines of, "Hey, parents, we're hearing some kind of uptick in assault claims, maybe you should talk to your children." There should be something that the school could have done in that situation, so that parents could maybe prevent the next victim. That's all.
Thank you. Is there any other pub?
Diana DeZoglio, State Senator for a part of North Andover. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, I came to listen. I came at the request of multiple parents and community members, and some of the students who have spoken here this evening. I'll be brief in my remarks. I felt it was important after hearing from you, and again, wasn't planning on speaking, I felt it was extremely important to get up, and to just say that you're not alone, and to say that these are some significant challenges. I don't understand all the dynamics of what's happening here. I'm here to listen, to learn, and I'm here to say I'm at the school committee's service. If there's anything that we need to change at the state level, I'm at your service. If there's anything that residents want to see changed at the state level, I'm at your service. I know that the school committee has a set of their own challenges, but if we need to partner with the North Andover community in any capacity, your state legislative delegation is at your service. So, please, please feel free to give us a call on anything pertaining to this or any other issue. Regarding the young women who spoke tonight, thank you for your bravery. And I say you're not alone. Just last year, I had to get up and talk about an agreement that I was given, a non-disclosure agreement that I really didn't want to sign at the time. Wasn't really aware of all the implications of the agreement in the long term. And we are working on the issue of victim silence overall at the state level right now. It's an issue that goes beyond these four walls. It's a statewide issue that we need to address. And I think that you highlighted the need for some of these reforms here tonight. And it's not easy to get up and to talk about these things, so I commend you for your bravery. I thank you for your bravery. And again, I'll just say, we remain yours in service, whatever we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, this will now close public comment. If you would like to leave, we'll have a five-minute recess before we continue the rest of our business, part of our meeting.
Or you can stay.
Or you're welcome to stay as well.
It's hard to make comments out of an hour and a half of ideas.
Thank you very much for sharing that. That took a lot of guts.
David is just putting me on the spot.
Should I, I probably should have gathered out of that.
My name is Pamela. I'm at 39 Royal Crest Drive in North Andover. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, I came to listen. I came at the request of multiple parents and community members, and some of the students who have spoken here this evening. I'll be brief in my remarks. I felt it was important after hearing from you, and again, wasn't planning on speaking, I felt it was extremely important to get up, and to just say that you're not alone, and to say that these are some significant challenges. I don't understand all the dynamics of what's happening here. I'm here to listen, to learn, and I'm here to say I'm at the school committee's service. If there's anything that we need to change at the state level, I'm at your service. If there's anything that residents want to see changed at the state level, I'm at your service. I know that the school committee has a set of their own challenges, but if we need to partner with the North Andover community in any capacity, your state legislative delegation is at your service. So, please, please feel free to give us a call on anything pertaining to this or any other issue. Regarding the young women who spoke tonight, thank you for your bravery. And I say you're not alone. Just last year, I had to get up and talk about an agreement that I was given, a non-disclosure agreement that I really didn't want to sign at the time. Wasn't really aware of all the implications of the agreement in the long term. And we are working on the issue of victim silence overall at the state level right now. It's an issue that goes beyond these four walls. It's a statewide issue that we need to address. And I think that you highlighted the need for some of these reforms here tonight. And it's not easy to get up and to talk about these things, so I commend you for your bravery. I thank you for your bravery. And again, I'll just say, we remain yours in service, whatever we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, this will now close public comment. If you would like to leave, we'll have a five-minute recess before we continue the rest of our business, part of our meeting. Or you're welcome to stay as well.
It's hard to make comments out of an hour and a half of ideas.
Thank you very much for sharing that.
I'm at 39 Royal Crest Drive in North Andover. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, I came to listen. I came at the request of multiple parents and community members, and some of the students I felt it was important after hearing from you, and again, wasn't planning on speaking, I felt it was extremely important to get up, and to just say that you're not alone, and to say that these are some significant challenges. I don't understand all the dynamics of what's happening here.